Okay, I'd like to call to order the January 20th, 2015 Warrington Board of Alderman Meeting. First order of business, I'd like to have Alderman Schluter lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to call for approval of the minutes from the Regular Board.
We have public hearing.
Wait a minute.
A public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. We have a public hearing for amendment to Appendix A, listing of permitted and conditional uses for ADM-69A. Jack, are you gonna?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item is a proposed tax amendment to Appendix A, the listing of permitted and conditional uses, ADM-69A. It is a request to add, include daycare as a conditional use within the R2 and R3 zoning districts. I'd like to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, my planning zoning report, and the public hearing notices.
Question, well, before we get to the discussion part, can you look up, I'd like to know what the lot size differences are between an R1 and an R2 or 3. Is an R1 significantly larger?
Yes, I think that's-
Is that like an acre, or is it something? I'm just kinda curious.
Off the top of my head, I think it's a minimum one acre, but I'll verify it real quickly.
All right, when we get to that part, thank you.
Okay, we call, call for anybody else that has any questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Rivera.
I'm Lacey Rivera.
And we're the ones who are for this, we're the ones who are starting the tax amendment. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer you what we can. Thank you.
Board members, anybody got any questions for him?
If we have questions, do we need to wait until down there?
Do we wait, okay.
I'm asking them, is that correct?
I guess so, that'd be, we ask, actually, in item eight-
You guys can, really, you can do it either way. If you want something to be on the record, because it is an actual public record for the public hearing, if you want something to be on the record, you can ask it now, but we also can do it during the discussion session, that's really how you wanna handle it.
Leave it till item eight, we have the zoning officer report. That being said, we'll close the public hearing. Now I will ask for approval of the minutes from the Regular Board meeting of January 13th, 2015.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes, regular board minutes from January 13th.
I hear a second. Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Person Holly to approve regular board meeting minutes from December, now from January 20th, 2015.
I'm sorry.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Dreyer.
Yes.
Alderman Schluter.
Yes.
Alderman Holly.
Yes.
Alderman Person Kestrel is absent, Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
And the motion carries with one absentee. Next item is, at this time, we have the call for the public hearing. We invite anybody from the public that has anything they would like to address. We allot you five minutes to do it, otherwise, we would request that you put it on a future agenda. Do we have anybody from the public to address the board? Seeing nobody, I'll move on to, do you have any comments from any of the members of the board?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
Nobody, okay.
Actually, just one, it's real brief, it's to one of our employees. Jack, congratulations to you and your son. I understand he made it through, and should be very proud.
Yeah, he left today to go back for 29 days at Camp Pendleton.
Well, if anybody doesn't know, his son was, just graduated Marine Corps boot camp, which, being a Marine myself, that's a very proud thing, and congratulations.
Yeah, very proud of him.
We'll all second that motion, I think. I myself, I have no comments, really, other than you guys, everybody's making this a pretty easy position for me to fill for the interim, so. That being said, I would like to turn it over to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, for updates.
I have a couple things for you this evening. First, to take notice of the letter that was at your desk tonight from the Truesdale Mayor and Board, letting us know that they have declined to consider moving their northern boundary to include half of Veterans Memorial Parkway. We just got that today at the city, so on a future agenda, we'll need to have the discussion about how you all want to handle Veterans Memorial. This was the first step, to see if they had any interest in that, so we'll put that on a future agenda for your discussion. And to let you know that staff met with by phone Lisa Frisco with Vario Consulting, our master plan consultant. At the end of last week, they have now signed their agreement and are proceeding forward. The first order of business is to get committee members assigned. There are three different committees that would be part of the planning process, so you will be seeing something come out. I'm trying to put together just a little description of the committees, kind of what the time commitment is, how many, so that you all can put your recommendations together for individuals that you think would benefit the city by being on those committees, so you should be seeing that in the next few days. But that is the first step in the process, is to get those committees put together, as well as a lot of data is being submitted at this point. They're really in the data gathering phase, but hope to, her hope was by the second week of February, I don't believe we're gonna get all of our committees nailed down, because once we come up with a list, she will review that and determine who she thinks are the best candidates for that. We'll then send out invitations to those individuals and wait on their response to come back, so I don't think that process is gonna happen in a two-week period of time. But I do believe we'll see the first meeting scheduled by the end of, before the end of February, so look for that coming in the near future. Other than that, that's really all I have. And Mayor, were you gonna speak about the August 3rd meeting?
February.
February 3rd, sorry, I'm way ahead.
February 3rd. Yes, I was gonna, well, toward the end, but we'll address it right now. We are gonna cancel the February 3rd meeting, and there will just be one meeting in February, which will be February 17th, I think, is the right date, so, just to let everybody know that we're just gonna have one meeting in February.
That's all I had for you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jack, at this time, you got any more you wanna say about that issue, or?
Yeah, and Alderman, I was correct, per Section 405-080, the R1 zoning district, it's low-density residential, and the minimum lot area is one acre in R1. Next, we have the proposed tax amendment to Appendix A, the listing of permitted conditional uses. During the 12-4-14 Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting, discussion regarding the proposed tax amendment request to Section 405-210 Home Occupations, ADM number 699 was tabled, and the Planning and Zoning Commission requested revising Appendix A to include daycare as a conditional use within the R2 and R3 zoning districts. Motion for approval passed 5 to 4 with one absent at the January 8th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions.
Well, let me start the conversation with this. I'm the representative to the PNZ Board, and I did write notes to the Board of Alderman on this, but I wanna preface the conversation by saying a couple things. First of all, this is one of these situations on the board where you wanna do everything you can to respond in a positive way to the petitioner, because I admire what they're trying to do, I admire the stay-at-home perspective, I admire all that stuff, and the question always becomes, how do you fit that within the ordinance of the city? I remember 30 years ago, when I was on the board, Dr. Brent was occupying his home as his dental operation, and he came to the city and he wanted to put his dentist at a home that was sitting at 47 and Banner, and because of the ordinance structure, we turned it down. He subsequently moved his business out of town, now he's back in town. At the time, it was logical that there would be a business of that type within that area. I don't think anybody would object to that, because right now, we have offices, we have medical offices in that area, and it seems to make sense, but the ordinance was not such that we could do anything about it other than rejecting it. The other thing I wanna say is that, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong or right, but I think Tiffany and Lacey did not specifically come to the city and ask for a tax amendment. The tax amendment is the response of the zoning board to the issue. They simply came to the city and they asked for us to help them figure out a way where they could do their business plan within their home. So I think when we have a discussion, we need to remember, it was not their solution to the problem with the tax amendment, that was the zoning board's solution. They simply came and said, what can we do to get this accomplished for our business objectives, so I think we need to bear that in mind. So, from my notes, I mean, my basic position on this was that I'd love to help the applicant, but since there is no ability to put, for them to request the conditional use permit at this time, the discussion really has to focus around, should we change the ordinance? Not should we change the ordinance as it relates to their home or where they're at, but the bigger question is, should the city make a change to the ordinance to put a conditional use in residential areas? And so I think the main focus of the discussion is not unique to their application, because there is no application, but it's just unique to the issue of, should we change zoning to allow this type of use anywhere within the requested zones that the zoning board stated? And that was R1 and R3 and R2, and the ironic part about it is, two things, one is it probably is more suitable in an R1, because if you have a daycare operation, you want larger side yards, so as the kids play, they don't disturb the neighborhoods. And the other part to me that's ironic, if you go into St. Louis County, there is many planned subdivisions that have daycare centers at the head of the residential area, so a contractor would come in and say, I'm gonna build out this acreage and put homes in, and I think it would be of value to my development if we had a daycare center in the front, so as families come and leave the daycare center, that we would, you know, this would be a great service to them, might help me attract people coming to my home. But that's a little different situation than we have here. We're not looking at a proposed ordinance that would say, okay, we're gonna consider a new type of district which would have a daycare center component in it, we're simply saying, how does that apply to what exists? Those are my starting comments.
I guess my question, and I don't know, this would be to PNZ too, but years ago, when I was on PNZ, when we got this, the question was always, always came up then, well, if we open it up to conditional use, then how restrictive do we get on it, and what do we allow under that conditional use? So then that opens up a whole nother set of, not necessarily problems, but a whole nother set of issues that could come down, down the pipeline later. Any comments, any other?
I'm gonna come at it from the point of view of a working mother who took kids to daycare all of their lives, I mean, until they were school age, obviously. It's a service that we need to have available in our community, and we would prefer, I would have preferred, I did prefer, to take my kids to a licensed daycare center, so the licensing that you're getting from the state is what's triggering you to come to us and ask for that. The other option is to not get state-licensed, and then they don't have to come to us.
I think you're gonna come up here and game.
Sure, sure, sure. Am I correct?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. We're in the process of getting the license, and one of the things that they ask is to talk to Planning and Zoning and see what permits or whatever we needed to get, and so when we contacted Mr. Haniff, we ran into this large thing that kinda put us at a screeching halt, so.
And I don't know if this changed through the years, Gary, because the person I took Luke to was licensed daycare provider in the city of Warrington, in the city limits, and took him there for several years, and he was, she was licensed by the state, and she had a permit from Warrington, 'cause she had to get that in order to be licensed.
But I suspect the issue may be the number of kids, because, I mean, I do a tax return for somebody who's a daycare center provider in her home, but it's a home daycare center, she does have to get a license from the state, but she's severely restricted as to the number of children she could take in, so I don't know if she's in a legal business, or she's-
But are we not allowing it at all?
You can have, we basically split, and I was at both Planning and Zoning meetings, so if you guys have any questions, I think I can maybe give you some accurate feedback on what Planning and Zoning said. We basically follow the state's definition, they'll help me with this, it's how many kids, unrelated, by blood or marriage, four?
Ten, well, it's four without the licenses.
Without the license, so we basically follow what the, basically what the state regulates, and I don't know what the regulations have been prior, but we have gone through some code changes over the last 10 years, and I would say probably eight or nine years ago, we kinda implemented this zoning in which it basically is what most cities do, where it's less than four unrelated kids to the family. Now, you can have as many related kids, but you can have four unrelated kids that you can watch at your house, and you're not required to be licensed by the state. If you go beyond four unrelated kids, then the state regulates you, they come in, they license you, they inspect you, they do all these additional things. That's the way most cities break it down, and they kinda break it down in this licensed/unlicensed thing, in the residential, truly residential areas. And I know the thought has been brought up, and the comments have been made, well, there's illegal daycares operating within the city. If we get a notification of a daycare operating now, that has, you know, basically, if the state finds out that there's a daycare operating with, say, six unrelated kids or whatnot, there's a complain, or there's some type of accident that happens, or they discover it, which they do, they'll send a certified letter to the prosecutor saying, we're asking you to prosecute this, we're asking you to enforce your local zoning ordinances, we're asking you to bring the state statute, you know, to the state prosecutor and prosecute it. So the enforcement mechanism, you know, it's kind of a symbiotic relationship between the local government and the state of Missouri, you know, in enforcing those regulations of the state.
Well, my thought process is, it makes daycare more affordable for our residents to go to an in-home daycare, as opposed to a daycare center, where they have a lot more overhead costs. So typically, an in-home daycare is gonna be cheaper rate than a daycare center. So if we're not allowing anybody to have more than four children-
Four children unrelated.
Four children unrelated.
Related, they can have as many related or unrelated that they can watch.
Are we making this difficult for them to provide the service, and are we then not going to have the services available at an affordable rate for our residents?
I mean, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, 'cause I don't know, I don't know how many daycares are in town, I know, years ago, I could see it was an issue, but since then, you know, we've had business daycares in town. I know there's a number of individuals who have daycares, a client I have, and she may only have four kids, I don't know if she's licensed or not, but, I mean, we do have service providers, but we don't have service providers in residential areas who are running a daycare with significantly larger number of kids, which, again, then would impact in some ways the neighborhood, if it's a larger number of kids. And that's, to me, is really the zoning question, it's not necessarily a case of encouraging a business, although I see that's important for the city, and that would be an important need, if that need exists out there, and I don't know if it does or doesn't, I-
Thank goodness I haven't had to use that for a while, so I can't answer that part of the question. I guess I'm looking at it from, from the traffic point of view. If you have 10 unrelated kids that are being dropped off, and every one of them was being dropped off by a separate parent, you've got 10 people picking, you know, dropping off in the morning, and 10 people picking up in the afternoon, and they're there for five minutes, that, I don't see that as a big inconvenience to neighbors, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I would've thought if there was, as far as the neighbors, I would've thought there'd have been somebody here to speak either for or against-
You did get, they did discuss this with their neighbors, and that's what I wanted-
Yes, we went to everybody on her street, it's at my sister-in-law's house, and we went to every single neighbor on the street and let them know that they were there, and nobody told us that they were unhappy, nothing, the signs went in the yard for-
Two months.
Two months, and, I mean, they know that we're there, we gave them our business card, we said, call us if you have any questions, concerns, and nothing.
Well, I wanted to make a point, and I pointed this out to Planning and Zoning about the neighborhood issue, because I think in all fairness, it's a business that is not operational yet, so you don't know what the impact is gonna be on the neighborhood, and I pointed that out to Planning and Zoning, 'cause it's a proposed business, and these guys are doing the right thing and coming before they operate with these kids there, so as far as neighborhood impact, that really, I don't know that you guys are gonna have that information in front of you until it's actually up and running, until you're actually looking at, I think as Gary pointed out, as a site specific to, you know, that house, that street, that neighborhood, ingress, egress areas, parking, the things. We typically look at a site plan where we look at the exterior of the residence, and we address what additional things may need to be done to address some of those things, so I just wanna make that point that I made at PNZ too, it's, the neighbor thing is a little bit, I think, deceptive in that you guys don't know what the impact's gonna be, because it's not operating.
But as a conditional use, everyone that wouldn't want to do this would have to come before us.
Yeah, and that goes back to my comments in my notes about what conditions would you put on these type of requests that would make it more, I mean, more usable, because the reality is, if you allow this as a usage in the district, you have to allow it. All you can do is, if I understand you're-
Absolutely.
You have to allow it, so if I come and say, I'm gonna turn my home into a commercial daycare center, and I'm gonna apply for this, you can't say I can't do it. What you can do is you can put conditions on me, so then it's the case of what conditions do you put on me to make it more, I don't wanna say-
Strikethrough or something.
Restrictive, I mean, so what would you say to me?
But this is a home occupation, not them starting a commercial-
It's not-
It's her home, that's where-
It's her home, no, they're asking for a commercial application, not a home app.
So why did we not go that direction?
Well, because, you know, we've, what they wanna do is a business, it's a commercial business, the case under construction is a commercial business as defined under our code. They're the same type of business, they're a state-licensed facility that is inspected on a regular basis by the state, that's regulated by the state, they have, and I, you know, they can have up to 10 kids, unrelated, and then additional kids that are related, correct?
Related, right.
You know, that's unlimited in number, correct?
Right.
The remaining kids, yeah. So, you know, is it, we've kinda defined the home occupation as less than four, and a lot of the daycares that operate are, you know, four or less, because it's one person, and, you know, they may have their own kid and four additional kids. We can look at defining it as a home occupation and redelineate it as a home occupation, but we've always defined this as a daycare under our code.
See, they could, right now, they could run their center with their five kids plus, what, four others, and city really doesn't have any involvement in that, but their proposal, what they would like to do is develop it into an ongoing business for themselves, so their goal would not be to run it with four kids, their goal would be to run it with 10 kids, or whatever the number of kids is, and turn it profitable, so then they can move out into a commercial area. That is their business plan, if you wanna put it that way.
One of the concerns, PNZ, I also wanna point this out, that's a point that I think is important, that was discussed at last Planning and Zoning meeting, was conditions, typically in a site plan, a conditional use, we typically only look at the exterior of the residence, we typically don't go into any interior type issues, and then the second issue that was brought up by Mr. Costello, and I think it was a point well taken, was the enforcement issues. You know, what are we gonna do, are we gonna, you know, if you restrict their amount of time, they can go 24 hours through their state license, but you could restrict, it could only be, you know, during the day type, if you restrict their drop-off and pickup time and whatnot, that would address maybe some potential neighborhood issues, how are you, and what mechanisms are you gonna use to enforce it? And that was a concern by PNZ, that, well, if we open this up, then do we open it up where we really have a serious enforcement issue, because somebody says, well, you know, they're only supposed to allow pickups till 6:30, but somebody was picking up late, we get a PNZ officer out there, or we get a police officer out there? That was another concern that PNZ had, was can we effectively enforce conditions on a conditional use, and a lot of the issues may be internal as well, internal to the home.
Right, the internal to the home, the state would take care of.
But the external plays into it too, in the sense that, let's say, since these are not large lot properties, let's say the provider of the daycare service said, well, the kids are gonna play in the side yard. Well, if there's 15 feet between the two homes, because of the side lot restrictions are less, because of the way subdivision is, then effectively, you have children playing in a side yard, who potentially could be playing outside the window, somebody who's ill, or sleeping, or, you know, works at night and wants to sleep during the day, which would be problematic, so then your condition would say, well, then the only play area that the children are allowed is in the backyard, which you would say, well, that's a solution to the problem. But then, how do you enforce that? Is the other issue, and who do we have to enforce it? Is that gonna become a police enforcement issue? Is that gonna require our zoning officer to be driving around these areas? Because one of the proposals was, 'cause I think they wrestle with the same issues we're wrestling, is, well, let's just create a new zone altogether. Let's just create a new classification of daycare.
A new definition, like, kinda like your point, Tony, like, kind of an in-between from a commercial daycare to less than four in-home thing. That's one of the things they discussed as well.
Here, and I'll address this question to the ladies, it's, in the notes I have, it says, a citizen requests to run a commercial daycare out of their home on a temporary basis, and it is reasonable to expect that the citizens will request a conditional usage. Is that the way you approach it, that this would be temporary, or?
Temporary, temporary as in, like, we are both mothers, obviously, and she has three children, I have two, and we'd have to raise the money to be able to afford a facility, so we don't have the ability to just go out and take a huge loan, so where my, our mind was, in two years, hopefully, we'll be in a facility. So that's temporary to us, not temporary as in six months or a year, it's gonna take us a little bit longer.
Okay, well, then that brings up, to me, another issue, that if, do we change a zoning ordinance based on possibly a temporary request? And I don't know, maybe that shouldn't come into play, I don't know.
I think some of the issue, just to explain it to you guys, unless you guys are there with it. I think a lot of us are grappling with the fact that if we do change this, it opens it up to other people, it's not just you guys, it isn't individuals, so I don't want you guys to take it all, like, personally on you.
No, we understand.
We've gotta look to the future of what's gonna happen on this level, and that's why it's a little difficult to decide. I mean, I, understanding that you guys are- I mean, I, understanding what you guys are, what you guys are doing, I think is great, but...
Thank you.
We've got to consider all the things that may happen outside of what you guys are doing.
Right.
Alderman Clark, you've been kind of quiet.
Been quiet. I'm trying...
Alderman Dryer, you also have been kind of quiet.
Yeah, I have to agree with a lot what Alderman Ock is saying. I'm trying to grasp, the hardest part of the job of being an alderman, for me, has always been the P and Z part. Unless you work with it a lot, it's a lot there to get a hold of. I'm afraid, I'm afraid what Gary's saying, if I understand it correctly, if we pass this and it goes in there, then everybody automatically has a right for the conditional use in...
Conditional right.
Conditional, and then we would have to grant it. Is that correct?
There's always an exception. It's a rule of law issue, but essentially, yes.
But it'd have to be like a safety matter or something like that.
Well, it would have to be something...
But if you had neighbors that came and said, "No, I don't want this next to me," that opposed it...
Well, the neighbors, ironically enough, if you pass this, and then the neighbor showed up and said, you know, "No, you can't do it." You can't use the contiguous neighbors as prima facie to deny the conditional use. You can't say, "Well, because it affects these neighbors, you can't use it." I mean, it's kind of bizarre when you get into the planning and zoning aspect of it. It really has to be, to deny a conditional use, you really have to have some serious public safety concerns to Alderman, to Alderman Clark's point, that in order to deny an actual conditional use permit, you obviously can put conditions on a use that says, you can make them put public improvements in and whatnot, but, I mean, I don't know that that's related to this particular circumstance. The decision here tonight is whether or not to change our zoning grid that allows us to be conditional, this use to be conditional, and daycare to be conditional in the R2 and R3 zones. It's not their project specifically or in particular.
And why can we not put R1 in there?
Well, you could put R1 in. That's just not what Planning and Zoning considered.
I mean, to me, R1 would be illogical, then, because then you would have a larger lot for the property set. You would have larger side yards. You would have greater distance between the homes, and that would make more sense than the 2 or 3.
Right. I would be more inclined to do R1 and R2 than R2 and R3.
Right.
And what zoning districts are they in, R2?
They're in a 2.
Yeah, and honestly, Theresa Scott was the one, I believe, that added the R3 to it. She thought it would be a good idea to have R2 and R3. They didn't ask for R3. That's where that came from.
Jim, what do you think?
Do we have anything?
I'm just curious.
I'm just thinking still, but it's kind of, I mean, John says it's difficult. I mean, I live in that neighborhood. Actually, the next road up, are you guys on a north or south side of... Or this side or...
We're on the north side, like, going down the street around the left.
Did you talk to the people behind, behind you?
There's a vacant house behind us.
Let me run an assumption by you. Tell me if I'm wrong. If we were to apply conditional use of this property, and a commercial entity were to find an older home, or bigger home, in one of these zones, and came in and bought the home and said, "We want to put a daycare center in here," they would have as much right to put that in as a property owner trying to put it in their home, correct?
Absolutely.
But can't you use the 10-person guideline here? If they've got under 10 people, you can do it. If they're going to do over 10 people, then that needs to be in commercial.
Well, if you got into a, and I think that that's a good point, Alderman Holly, if you added that condition, and that condition was approved, if you say, "We're only going to do it, but it's only 10 people," and you did that consistently on every conditional use permit, and then, obviously, Planning and Zoning, their practicality to it was, well, how are we going to enforce 10 kids? How are we going to know that there's 10 kids?
You're going to want more than 10 kids. I mean, to get a business going, you're going to...
We can only have 10 within the home.
Well, 10 plus the five unrelated, they can have 15.
Right.
They can have a total of 15.
Well, two of them are in school.
Oh, okay.
The other three are, they're two younger...
Is it like after school, then, or something?
Yeah.
But you would have, ideally, your business goal would have 10 additional paying kids. So, your goal would have to be to have 15 kids.
Right, including our five children.
Right, which includes your five children, you know.
But if you just ran it along the lines of the state and not open it up for a, in large commercial, they're not looking at developing their business in their home long-term. When they want to grow beyond 10, then you would move into a commercial facility.
Right.
Right. The state's 10 number is based on their square footage. That's what it's based on. So, it would, then, it would be varied based on if it was a 2,000-square-foot home, they wouldn't be able to have how many kids?
Only 10. Like, you can only have 10. 10 is the max within a home. Now, if your square footage is smaller, then it'd be five kids, or, huh?
What if there's no living area in there? What if it's like Alderman Ock said, where there's nobody living there?
That's 20.
That'd be a group home, yeah, and that's considered a facility.
And that's, would have to be commercial.
Yeah.
Right. Well, this is a commercial zone. So, so if, like, in Alderman Ock's example, if it was a corporation and nobody was living there, then it would be 20 kids, because there would be no living quarters in there, right?
Technically, if there was nobody living there, then it'd be a group, group childcare, or what they also call it.
And does the statement require you to be in a commercial?
Right.
And we have to go with the worst-case scenario, whatever, or the most...
But the state doesn't say you have to be in a commercial. They say you have to check and get approval from your local zoning, right? Like, they did in the...
That's true, but for the group commercial home, you have to be in a commercial building to have the 20 or more. That's the whole house that's turned into a childcare center. That's what...
Wendy?
No, the childcare. Kids under construction, that's a home that's turned into a, but they're even bigger. They built on to make it...
Right, right, but they got more square footage, but the, you're saying there have to be renovations, but if it was a 2,000-square-foot home, they made the renovations, and it was conditional, they could have up to 20 kids, right?
If the square footage allowed it, yeah.
Yeah.
But if we say, "No, they can't go more than 10," the state's not going to give them a license to have 20 if we said, "No, no more than 10."
Well, they couldn't, it would be, we would be, the state could give them a license to have 20, but we would be enforcing our rule of no more than 10. We would be enforcing...
The state won't give them a license to do 20 if we don't.
They won't...
The state requires them to have our approval.
Right.
If we said, "No more than 10," then the state won't give them a license for 20.
They won't even give us...
Are you asking me? I don't know if they will or they won't.
No, that's my opinion.
They won't even give us a license without your guys' approval.
Right.
Right.
So...
Right. But I don't know that the state really looks at what we approve and what we don't approve, per se.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Okay, all right. Well, I've been, I've been involved in the enforcement, and it's not that direct between the two, that they know exactly what is and what is not there, but that's just in the enforcement. So, I don't know in the application and what they apply for and what they get.
How does the board feel about putting restrictions of no more than 10 unrelated?
As a redefinition of conditional, of the, what would you call it, though? Would you call it a home business?
We briefly talked about what, putting in new categories, what you guys were talking about doing.
What?
We have 10 plus the five, but two are in school, yeah.
Well, I think I could live with a redefinition and taking out the R3.
Me, too. I agree.
And padding R1.
Me, too.
And not trying to, who's going to enforce it?
Well, I mean, that's the other issue. The most difficult thing to enforce is daycare, home daycares. Because until you get a complaint, and sometimes it's competitors complaining about their competition.
Okay, Jack, in your time here, have you had any complaints about daycare centers and their homes?
Yes.
Okay. Can you give us some feedback as to what's, some of that that's happened, and how did we resolve some of that?
Contacted the person. They weren't aware that it was against city code, and they quit watching the excess number of kids.
Okay.
Is that basically what it was, was the number, dealt with the number of kids they had?
Yes. They weren't aware that it was in violation.
Okay.
Well, I guess we...
So, Gary, how do we put that into a motion?
Well, do you guys want to...
Well, I think that we have to...
We have to act on the P and Z's.
We have to act on P and Z, and so I think we need to turn down P and Z, and then we can ask the city attorney to craft some language that kind of goes to the point of the discussion of redefining the number of kids, and then go by, do we have to go back to P and Z to switch the matrix?
Yeah, because we're going to have to, it's going to be another revision to chapter 400, so we'll have to do new public notices. The other thing is, when they, Alderman Holly, one of the things they talked about as well, I want to give your feedback on now, before I take it back, is they kind of talked about the 10 number unrelated. They also talked about maximum cap on the total number of kids, including related. If that's something you want to consider in a new definition, and then...
That's reasonable.
And then the final thing is, they wanted to require it to be owner-occupied. They did not want to allow it to be non-owner-occupied.
I agree with that.
Okay. So, that's kind of where they, and even, Planning and Zoning, Scott Schoenfeld, it was his last meeting, said, "You know what? I would have voted for this if we had that kind of middle-of-the-road definition to put some restrictions on it." So, they actually...
So, do you think this is something that...
I think it's something that, I think they'll, you know, definitely listen to and definitely consider.
Okay.
They, basically, they wanted me, the parameters of what they wanted me, if we came up with a middle kind of definition, was it had to be state-licensed, and they had to maintain their state license. They couldn't have above 10 unrelated kids. Do you remember, was it, do you remember what the maximum number of children they were talking about at the meeting was?
As far as I know, that they were not comfortable with more than just the 10 children.
More than just the 10, total.
So, it would be five, your five plus five in this case. But then, that kind of goes back to the question, when you start putting those kind of restrictions on, how do you ever become profitable to move your home business into a commercial setting when your business plan is restricted to five income-producing children?
That's why we...
She's got two more in school, so you take two more part-time.
Well, maybe what we do is we...
She needs to talk to a business teacher, right?
Absolutely.
Well, and so, maybe what we do is we leave that alone, but we talk about owner-occupied, R1, R2. We, state-licensed, and then, do you guys want to put in the definition anything related to the 24-hour daycare? In other cities I've represented, the 24-hour daycare can be an issue. I don't think it's going to be an issue for them, but it can be an issue. So, I don't know if that's something you want to put in the definition or leave for conditions, because, you know, we'll have to bring that up every time a conditional use permit comes up, or we can put it in the definition and just make it very clear during working, regular hours, or what, how do you guys want to handle the 24-hour? That's the only other issue that, after the meeting, I saw would be something we want to consider in a mid, middle-of-the-road definition.
I mean, to me, I mean, the daycare center, we run in my organization, you know, it, every kid has to be picked up by 6 o'clock. You know, sometimes they spill over if the parents are going late. So, we don't, you propose to run a 24... But, I mean, but this is a business concept, so I guess we should ask you, as a business, as a daycare provider, since I'm 30 years away from ever doing this, you know, is there value, or I can ask any mom, is there value to having a daycare provider who's doing more of a 24/7 approach?
Or overnight care?
Overnight care.
Well, I mean, I can... I can see the benefit in it, because you have a lot of people who work overnights and who would need that childcare, because a lot of centers don't have 24-hour care. On our personal end, we were going to apply for the 24-hour license, but not because we were going to operate 24 hours, but because of, your options are from 6 to 6, or 24-hour, because once a month, we were going to offer a date night, where we'd watch the kids for an extra three hours and let the parents go out. So, that would make us apply for that 24-hour, even though we personally wouldn't use it.
I guess as long as you're applying, you might as well apply for everything that's restricting yourself. Well, okay, so I think, do we have a kind of a plan? Okay, so I'll make a...
First off, we need to act on it.
We have to act on it. And then I, what I'd like to do is act on this, and then if Tony wants to explain...
No, okay.
Just pardon me.
Are we changing home occupation?
No, I think what we'll do is, we'll create a new, we'll create a new definition. We'll put it in, integrate it into the grid, and we'll define it under the definition and keep it out of home occupation.
So, we will have to modify home occupation, too, because right now, it specifically says they're not...
Yeah, we'll change a little bit of that language, too.
Yeah, home occupation says that you can't have employees.
Yeah, so we'll need to change that, too.
So, if you're running it out of your home, technically, you're an employee.
Right.
Before we proceed, ladies, there's been a lot of back-and-forth talk. Do you understand where we're at?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you don't, please ask, because I know even sometimes we can get a little confused as to what some people are asking.
I think we get the gist of it, but thank you.
And you've learned that wheels of government move slowly.
Well, not just that. We don't want you to get discouraged. We want to encourage any type of ownership inside our city. We definitely want to do that. Just sometimes we have to step through processes that set us back slightly. It doesn't mean we're not going to move forward, though.
Awesome, thank you.
So, I've made a motion that we reject, I have to make a positive motion, though. I'd make a motion that we accept the P and Z recommendation on the text amendment.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark, to accept the P and Z recommendation on the change of R1, R2 conditional use permit.
Before you roll call vote any discussion, I'm going to vote no because of the way the motion's presented. Because if we vote no, that means that the P and Z recommendation is denied, and then we can go on with the further discussion. If you vote yes, then the P and Z recommendation takes place, and I get the gist, that's not what we want to do. So, we really want to vote no on that.
Glad you clarified.
Well, sometimes it gets confusing when you're, it's kind of like a double negative.
Okay, roll call vote.
Alderman Schluter?
No.
Alderman Holly?
No.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dryer?
No.
Okay, the, another question. Do you feel like you have enough clarity from the board to proceed with this?
Yeah, I think the structure of it, I think Jack and I can get something, what do you think that'll be?
March would be the first one. You can't make February.
Can't make February, but March will be the amendment that we can get for public hearing notices on it.
And then it comes back to us.
Yeah, so then the understanding is, there'll be a public hearing in March, and then the P and Z will act on it, and then in April, it'll come before the board again.
Correct.
That's the time sign.
No, I would put them both in March.
Yeah, as long as you guys have your second meeting.
No, that's right, because we meet after, we can do it in the second meeting, that's...
Yeah, and I think we kind of have a consensus, and I think P and Z will, you know, understand and feedback on it, too.
And if there's any questions or frustrations, please stay, and we'll answer them after the meeting. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate your patience and...
Your entrepreneurial efforts.
Yes, we hope you're very successful, because we do need it, I know. And so, that being said, the recommendation by the P and Z is defeated, and we'll proceed with Chris and Jack going forward, hopefully come up with a positive direction going. Jack, anything else?
No, sir.
Next order of business will be Guy, Public Works Director. What do you got?
Good evening. You have the monthly report in front of you?
I only have one question related to the public, and I noticed under major projects, you had smoke testing down. I was kind of curious how that went. Did you fight a lot of issues, or...
We, after smoke testing, we've had no complaints, because we're getting out the information, everybody signs up. We've located 11 broken cleanouts that was taken in water, four caps that was removed, that was missing completely, clean out in the creek that was completely busted, was taken in water. We've located 20 items that needed to be repaired. All 20 has been repaired, and we've located one gutter drain downspout, and I believe Jeff knocked on the door and notified them, and we need to go back and check.
Wow, just one, that's pretty good.
Yeah, that's quite a bit of water, because they're all taking water. There's smoke testing tomorrow, and that's going to continue to keep going.
Guy, how often do you do these?
We've done it two times. By the time we get the signs out...
No, I meant, like, is this something we do every five years, every year? How often?
This is a new program that we've been doing.
First ever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we, a few years, a number of years ago, we went into...
Tomahawk?
I think it was Tomahawk area, and did smoke, smoked testing, because we were aware that there was a number of gutters, the downspout...
the downspouts that were going into the system. So it was a, it was a targeted thing as opposed to a general broad testing. I don't think we've done broad testing before. So we went in to fix a specific problem we knew about.
I know they made it on Claire once, and my parents were talking about that. It's been about fifteen years ago, I think, or something.
But I guess in theory, on the gutter issue, once you've gone through and saw there's no gutters, you have to go back. But you do have to go back if there's broken tiles that create problems.
And when you're, when you're looking for the mains and damaged mains, usually that's done in July and August, when the ground dry and cracked, and it comes out of the ground better. We're focusing now on gutter drains and issues that can be repaired quickly. So what they did is they found the issues, they took pictures, documented it, and then they went back out, did the repairs, then went out and they continued smoke testing, did them repairs, and then there's smoke testing again tomorrow. We did around the school, when school was out of session, and we didn't want the fire department showing up at school. So that's gonna be continued on, you know, we're hitting it hard now, because the weather's cold, and we can actually do it while it's cold.
And that was the only question I had in your report.
That's all I have, if you have anything, anything else?
Okay. Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Next order of business is Chief, please. Greg, what do you got for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First thing I have this evening is the monthly report from December. We continue to see better numbers due to having full staff or close to full staff. So proactivity is up, that kind of explains the numbers difference there between last year and this year. A couple of notes about things that the detectives have been involved in that are noted in the report. One of the things I'm really happy about is the high school continues to ask someone to come and do presentations in class. They have a mystery detective presentation that they do, where they bring a slideshow in and actually interact with the students and come to a conclusion about a case. So it's kind of a cool, interactive program that they do, and it's been very successful in a couple of different classes, actually. And the other thing they did ironically was a robbery presentation at US Bank. Unfortunately, we had a robbery at American Bank shortly after that. But we actually feel pretty confident that we're on the right track on that American Bank robbery case. So, any questions about the monthly reports?
I just, this is a simple one. What does it mean when it says lack of PC exists for any crime was committed? What's PC stand for?
Probable cause.
Probable, okay, well.
I appreciate the easy question.
First of computers, yeah, no. I mean, sometimes we use acronyms, and it doesn't always translate. Now, you have to admit, some of you also didn't know what PC.
No, I had no clue.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if you would, if you would attend the mystery detective presentation, you might know what that is.
I didn't have that when I was in high school.
Just saying.
See, I, see, I, the first report, I didn't know what a one hitter was, I just thought that was something Cardinal Pitcher did, but. No, that was wrong.
So you're getting an education then about.
Yeah, I'm getting a real education.
And I still haven't seen your ride-along application, so.
No, you haven't, have you? Moving along.
Moving on.
Moving along, I know you got something else for us.
I, I do. We're gonna talk about the website redesign. I made up a brief presentation to talk about this. I'm really not sure how I ended up talking about it. I guess because I sat closest to the telephone while we were doing the interviews, that must, that must have been it. I don't know, I was kind of the center of the table. Everybody said he's gonna do it. Anyway, so we are way deep into trying to figure out who we're going to recommend for the website design. If you go to the next slide for me. We put together a committee of five individuals. Most of the people that were in the group have some experience updating the website here already. But basically, here's, here's what happened. We received eleven proposals from companies all over the country and one from Canada. So I was actually surprised that we got that bigger response. The committee did their usual rating procedure, and we narrowed it down to the top three. From there, we set up interviews and also requested that they do a demonstration. And what we were specifically looking for was, you know, show us the wow websites that you've done. And also, and maybe even more importantly, is show us your backroom software, or what, what you guys use for us, the staff members who are not necessarily IT savvy, to update the website. So they gave us that demonstration, and at the end of that day, we actually eliminated one of the top, one of those three. And most of that was due to their hosting, issues with their hosting process. There were some questions that left me with my mouth open. For example, what they promised us, a couple of days if their system went down, that they'd get us back online, whereas all the others had a complete continuity plan in place, and it was just, it was very strange. Anyway, so at the end of that, after we eliminated that one, the committee had some sort of additional follow-up questions. And those questions, if you could go to the next slide for me, well, we ended up queuing in on Civic Live. And the reason that is, if you go on, were these five focus points. And these were the points that really came out in the re-interview process. Consistent page design from page to page within the website, the backroom software, usability testing, agendas and minutes, and a citizen dashboard. So I'm gonna talk about those just real briefly. So consistent page design, the question really was, how does a content management system adapt to help the city keep its pages look and feel consistent? So if you look at our webpage right now, if you go from page to page, even within a department, or from department to department, you have a bunch of different looks, because you've had several different people over the years who have been updating those webpages. So I asked the two top contenders, you know, how do we make sure that that happens? And one was, well, we, you know, we set up templates and, and, you know, you work within that. Civic Live, on the other hand, they give us the opportunity to set up our own templates and work within those templates all the time. So we would always use the same templates from page to page to page, so it would keep a consistent look, look and feel consistent. The next thing we did, if you go back please, this is a screenshot from the backroom software. Again, this is the software that allows the sort of non-IT savvy people, people that don't know what HTML even stands for, to update a webpage. Their backroom software is very good, it's very drag-and-drop savvy, easy for a typical user to, to grab something. What you're looking at here, though, is a workflow for, say, a trouble ticket. So people, users, citizens can come online, create a trouble ticket, say it's a pothole. And that trouble ticket doesn't just create an email to an individual like it does now. In this case, it creates several emails that go to several people, and then there's an actual workflow, and there's checkpoints along the line. And I'll get in just a second to why that's important. So this is customizable for each and every report, whereas the other contender was not. It was a very finite group of point-and-click things that you could choose from. Usability testing, Civic Live did this better than E-Gov by a huge margin. These were pre-live metrics that they applied to it. This one that you're looking at here is actually a heat map that looks at where the eye tracking went on the site, to make sure that it was, that the site is completely usable and that it's friendly. They also do clickability studies, and that's prior to it going online. Both of the companies said that they would apply Google Analytics, but that's really after it goes live to see how things are going. So this was, to me, this was a big deal. Should go to the next slide, please. I said I would get back to the workflow. Those dots that you see on that timeline coincide with the checkpoints that I talked about in that workflow. So let's say a citizen puts in a report of a pothole problem. They can come back into the system and take a look and see what the process is on each and every report that they've made, and it's basically updated as that proceeds through, up to and including where this one is right now, where they can put their own feedback in after the situation has been corrected. This to us was a huge deal, and really made this, and I forget, somebody said something about a virtual city hall. To me, this really makes this a virtual city hall. You know, for somebody that doesn't like to pick up the phone and make a call, but would rather do some clicking and typing, this is, this is the big deal. There's one other thing, and that is the next slide, and that was the way that they presented agendas and minutes. E-Gov, the second highest contender, had, they basically consolidated all of the agendas, minutes, and whatever other documents into one long list. And at the top of that list, they had five filters that you could use to drop down and pick and choose, and it would filter it down to approximately where you wanted to get. Civic Lives, though, really is more date-related, so you can drill down to it fairly easy with about, you know, two or three clicks and get to the date that you're really looking for. The other thing that Civic Live is doing that I haven't seen on any other websites, unless it's a third-party vendor, is this thing here. They're actually embedding videos, so for example, the video from tonight's board meeting would be embedded in our website, and they're going to allow us to put cue points in as well. What does that mean? That means, so for example, every agenda item, we would note the cue point, and they could come in and click on it and get right to the specific part of the meeting that they want to view, and not have to go through the whole meeting. That's a very big deal, and sets them way apart. So really, these five points set them far and above away from E-Gov, and is, after the committee reconvened, we all agreed that Civic Live was the company to recommend to move forward with our website design. So, we are looking for approval to move forward with Civic Live today.
I do have a couple of questions, I'm a shock. What happens, since nobody in the ward has anything to do on Wednesday mornings other than watch the video of city council, if there's a lot of video traffic, people watching, how does that impact the other activity on their server? Would it significantly slow down somebody who may be going on to their calendar or requesting service?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And the website, as it is now, will not be hosted here at City Hall. It's actually hosted at a highly technical data center that has a tremendous amount of redundancy and security. And in fact, I believe they host some of the Google pieces. So they're used to a high amount of traffic, and I don't really see that as being an issue.
The other question I had relative to this was, to me, the strength of any website is your ability to change it. So it sounded like to me, this was the one that had the strongest ability for users to change, because if we're gonna expect people to come out to the city's website, we want to keep it fresh, we want to keep it active, and if it's stale, people aren't gonna use it, so this gives us the greatest ability to do that. Is that fair?
Right, and two points to that. First of all, yes, absolutely, the backroom software was by far the best that we saw that day in the demos. The second point is, they, and really the other one as well, this did not set them apart, but after the third year, they start looking at the site and will do a complete makeover of the site to keep it, to keep it fresh overall. And that doesn't cost any more money, it basically is included in the maintenance, and I, I think it's just a great idea.
My question is, is the cost of this within our budgeted amount?
Yes.
Yes. I think we had substantially more budgeted, didn't we?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, yeah.
So my, my question was, do we have to pay them in Canadian dollars or American?
I, I, yeah, I hope this was bid in US dollars.
Is this compatible with any web browser, or is it just Internet Explorer?
Yeah, no, they, they make sure that they write the code to be compatible. They validate all the code within the standardized specs. That was something that the other company didn't do particularly well.
I hate Internet Explorer.
I do too.
I get, I use Opera all the time.
There you go. It's a good.
So let me just put in my two preferences, I went and looked at all their websites, because you had them on the list. My preference is, from a user perspective, if the website has a search box in it, then if you don't know where to go, you go to the search box. And I know that some of their sites had it and some of it didn't. And so to me, you know, I tend to go out like the city of Maplewood's website a lot. I can go into search my topic, and it'll bring up necessary things, and it's a quicker way to access it. So I, that would be my preference. The other preference I would have, if there's a service tab button on the main page, where it's really easy for people to request city services, that they don't have to go look for it. But it's pretty predominant, those are the two things that I think are important.
One of the things, Gary, that in all the websites we've looked at, that I want to see, in many of the city government websites, there is just what you say, "I want to," is what the button says. And then the dropdown is, "Report a pothole, get a business license, look at video from," I mean, it's a whole list of the most common, and we can customize that to be whatever we want it to be on our website. And I think that's one of the most important things. Make it easy for people to find what they're looking to do.
Any other questions, comments, Greg, or anybody?
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the police chief to go with Civic Live in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Motion by Alderman Person Holly, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to accept the bid from Civic Live in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars for their services on website redesign. Roll call vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with one absent. Greg, thank you very much for all your effort on that.
It was, it was all a committee, we all worked together on that.
Pass that along, I will. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Brad, but he's not here, he must not have anything.
He has the bug that's going around.
Oh, he does?
He was out today, yes. And we encouraged him to stay home and come to the city and share with us.
Good idea.
Did he have anything to pass along?
Just his monthly report is all he had.
Anybody have any questions on?
It was an active month for tombstone layouts, that's all I can say for it. It was an active month for tombstone layouts, for headstone layouts. You don't see that much activity generally.
Okay, if we have nothing, no questions or comments on Brad's report. Melody?
The items I have for you, the ordinance and the resolution that's on the agenda for tonight is for the involuntary annexation going to the west six hundred feet. And I put a picture in there again of the piece of property of Interstate seventy. The resolution is calling for an election on the April seventh ballot for the annexation.
This kind of, the picture kind of reminds me of a discussion where the map is going this way, because we're, we're heading by closer to the overpass, is that right?
We're getting closer, yes.
Okay.
Then we can take larger chunks as wider, wider against.
Okay, great.
And the only other item I had was an update on candidate filing, which ended today. We had three people that filed for mayor, Eric Schluter, John Clark, Wayne Smith. Two filed for Ward one, Alderman Ward one, Kyle Bradbury and Karen Castlerle. Alderman Ward two, Gary Ock, Lloyd Weidman and Scott Schultz. And for Alderman Ward three, Don Bruin, Bob Delloy, and Kellen Dyer.
Any comments on that? Okay, next order is bills.
Make a motion for the first reading of bill number oh-five dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Person Holly for first reading of bill number five dash fifteen.
An ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of certain unincorporated areas of Warren County, Missouri, to the city of Warren, Missouri, and for the extension of the western corporate limits of said city to include such areas.
Call for the second final reading and pass.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number 05-15.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dyer for second reading and passage of bill number 5-15.
An ordinance for the purpose of providing for the annexation of certain unincorporated areas of Warren County, Missouri, to the city of Warren, Missouri, and for the extension of the western corporate limits of said city to include such areas.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Passes five to zero with one absent. Next is a resolution, calling for the election on April 7. Call for, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dyer. For first reading and passage of revolution, resolution number 308.
A resolution calling for an election on April 7, 2015, regarding an unincorporated area of land, and is under consideration for annexation by the city of Warren, Missouri.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Passes five to zero with one absent. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Schluter to adjourn. All in favor? That's all, folks.